All right, I've got six o'clock, we're gonna call meeting to order. The roll call, we have all board members present plus our two student representatives. Approval of agenda, looking for motion.
I'll make a motion.
A motion from Bruce, a second from Rick, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, carry. Public input, we have no, nothing for public comments?
That's my knowledge.
Uh, on the organization of the board action. As the temporary chairperson, I'm now recognize nominations for the position of chairperson.
I'll nominate Mr. Pearson.
Second.
Nomination for myself and the second, are there any further nominations?
It should be Cheryl. Did you get it? Okay.
Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Hearing no further nominations, I will entertain a motion to close the nominations and cast ballots.
So, make that a motion.
And motion from Rick?
I'll second.
And a second from Cheryl. Oh, you had, let you catch up, we're gonna go through, I don't go through too fast. Yeah. Alright. Is there, uh, any further comment? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, carry. Looking for, recognizing nominations for position of clerk. And I will make nomination for Jake. For position of clerk.
Second.
I have a second from Rick. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Sorry, are there any further nominations? Hearing no further nominations, I'll entertain a motion to close the nominations and cast ballots. I have a motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Cheryl. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, carry. Will now recognize nominations for position of treasurer.
I would nominate Cheryl.
We have a nomination, uh, potentially from Rick for Cheryl and a second from Maggie. Are there any further nominations?
Maggie, were you interested in the position?
No, I think you are great at it.
Okay, so I'm ready to relinquish it if you would just take it over.
You do a great job.
Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Hearing no further nominations, I entertain a motion to close nominations and cast ballots.
So move.
Motion from Bruce.
Second.
And a second from Rick. So any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, carry. And the vice chair, now recognize nomination for the position of vice chairperson.
Nominate Maggie.
I have nomination from Bruce for Maggie.
I'll second.
Second from Cheryl. Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Are there any further nominations? Hearing no further nominations, I'll entertain a motion to close the nominations and cast ballots.
So moved.
I have a motion from Rick.
Second.
A second from Bruce. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, carry. Assignment of committees, so we filled out the spreadsheet down, Janelle, you kinda wanna?
Sure, I can walk through.
Walk through a little bit of that?
Yep, I, one thing that is different, um, this year you'll notice is, um, on the committee assignments that are in identified, um, on the agenda, um, we did not have Megan, and so her positions, her committees weren't there. So we've got some duplicates and there's some multiple levels of interest, so we can just maybe walk through each of these areas. Minnesota State High School League, uh, we have one, um, there is a need for one member. Um, I believe Rick has been in the, um, member in the past, um, Thomas and, um, Rick both had interest, so if there's a preference.
Want to maintain it?
For me.
You can certainly keep it.
I'll keep out.
I think I want that.
Five years we never called a meeting.
Seriously?
They almost won.
Frank, it'll be this year.
They, they almost did that, this last year I thought, I thought they were going to, but then they must not have.
They had to actually, um, vote on something.
Oh, that's right.
Couple years ago, and I think they did it virtually.
Well, the one time I was called, I went and voted, they said, well, I think Bob was, he did it already for me.
Yeah.
Alright, um.
Go ahead, um, uh, so the C, C is the next one, Schools for Equity and Education. Um, attend those meetings, historically that has been, uh, Jake, one of the things that, uh, we should also pay attention to is if you recall, we added, um, MREA, um, as a membership this year, and so I believe that this, um, assignment would likely represent on MREA as well, as we work to make a determination whether we stay C membership and MREA or how that looks, so.
Do we wanna just add that as a column for future years, the MREA?
Um, I think we can, um, maybe, yeah, maybe let's do.
Member or? C slash?
Yeah.
MREA, so it's.
I'd do the C slash.
So it's joined.
I would like to, okay.
All indicators, we're gonna probably stay with both.
Right. And that, and I think there's some value in having the same representative, because then there's some, um, con- uh, congruency between each of those meetings, so.
Right, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. And then, Jake, you're obviously okay with that still?
Yep, yep.
Okay, wonderful, um. I can't read that.
Stearns County.
Stearns County Family Collaborative, thank you.
Stearns County. Yep.
I think that terrible, I, oh, I can't read that right. Alright, so the Stearns County Family Collaborative Services, we actually are a voting member, um, now, and so one of the things that, um, thanks Thomas. So, they have opted to meet virtually though, um, and so those are occurring, um, we had, we had one already this fall, and we have one this spring, so there'll be one more in the fall. Um, Thomas has re- has been on that in the past, and Cheryl was the alternate, so we do need one and an alternate.
I'm okay.
Thomas, are you okay keeping it?
Yep, I'm okay staying.
Okay. Um, the legislative.
Cheryl, yeah, you okay with being the alternate?
That, that's fine unless someone else wants to take alternate position. It's an easy meeting, but they have to have a voting member there.
Yep.
If they don't make a forum, they can't vote.
My only problem is it's afternoon meeting, so.
Okay, I'm okay with it.
Um, the legis- Oh, sorry. Megan, is there, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut.
No, 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 I was just, sorry.
Um, legislative liaison, um, that has historically been, um, has been Jake. Um, one of the things that we do as a result of or with that position is to go, um, to like the day at the Capitol, um, and I think that in the past, um, we've tried to correspond that with your day as the chaplain.
Yep.
And so we've tried to have some, um, overlap that way. So is there any other interest in a legislative liaison otherwise?
I think since Jake and the governor, just like that.
Since Jake and the governor.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
He does a great job, there you go.
He gets to go out to lunch with the governor when he's down there.
Sure.
What?
This happened.
Alright.
I think there's some benefit to you to having our C representative.
Yeah, on the legislative, yeah.
As a legislative, that makes sense. I agree.
Yep.
Yep, that does make some sense, for sure. Uh, the next would be the West Central Education District, um, so again, the West Central Ed, uh, board is represented of, um, a board member of each of the member districts, um, it's, I, historically has been Maggie. Um, I see, uh, Megan, you had some interest there as well, um, you know, from a, so let's, we can have some discussion, I think there's some, there's, it's, there's a lot of, of nuances to learn about the West Central Ed district, so I think that's maybe something just to be, um, mindful of as we look at transitions, but, um, so any thoughts or discussion there?
Maggie, if you really want it, you can have it, I'm fine with that. I just, I didn't know how many of them you guys had taken on because when I filled it out, so if you want it, I can, you can go ahead and do it and.
Would you be okay with being the alternate or?
I'll do it. Yep.
I'm willing to give that up.
Okay. Um, um, Miranda, you got that? Okay, thank you.
Cause yeah, that takes some learning, so I'm, um, here with that this one.
When you go to those meetings, are you limited to the amount of people that can go with you? So.
As a voting member.
As an alternate.
As a voting.
Could she come along and listen?
She could come, but then, and then just not vote.
She's not vote, yes.
I actually, when I first came on the board, I gave, went to a couple of those meetings, just for information, and they're very, very interesting.
Okay. One of the things that did change in the last joint powers review was, um, even if we have the alternate present, this superintendent will be the casting vote instead of the alternate, primarily because of the lack of, of consistency in attendance. Uh, you'll notice that that was for, it only meets, uh, six times a year, so it's every other month that that board meeting meets, and then the superintendents meet monthly, so there's, um, that was a decision that the, the board made in order to have, um, consistency in having somebody that just maybe was assigned as the alternate, but hadn't had any of the background to any of the issues, and then, um, that you, that was just a determination that took place during the last.
I think the idea was if, if Megan wants to go to some of this to catch on.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Catch on and you don't feel like you're, you can't be there.
Yeah. Yep.
And then in the future, right, if that.
Yeah, that's why I, I like that idea of maybe going to a few of them to, in the future to maybe take that one on.
I think there's, I'm trying to remember of how many are gonna remain from the other districts. I think for sure two, there's, was it? They were hoping to, cause it is, it's hard to like come in, but I think learning it, then that way, it's hard when there's a couple new ones, but then next year you could transition.
I think you came in cold.
Yes, and I think there was, maybe there was only another one who was cold, but it was nice to have some people from the other districts who had some consistency.
So then, moving on to, um, continuing ed, so commit, continuing ed, um, meets four times per year, historically that has been, um, we, we actually just, um, nope, I was thinking of professional development. Uh, continuing ed is four times per year, um, I believe that has, that's not continuing ed, that's community ed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You went up on me, okay, so continuing ed is, um, four times per year.
Yeah.
So, um, Cheryl has been on, and the, and I don't know, um, were you on last year, Cheryl?
Yes.
Okay, um, Megan, it, it's, is that an area that you'd be interested in continuing or hopping onto?
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are right after school.
We'll make it work.
Okay, sounds good. Some of those too, um, we do have the capacity of, of, um, logging you in virtually if the transition time doesn't work.
Okay.
Um, now we're on to Community Education Advisory Committee. Um, I see that, uh, Rick, and I think we had it mixed up, because I think you were getting, Thomas, were getting the initial email about.
I haven't heard of any meetings last year.
Yeah.
So I think you, that was mixed up somehow, so, um, whichever one of you would prefer, I know there is a.
Actually, meeting with them, it's fine with me.
That's not one that you have to keep up with, it's new every time.
Right. Oh, I know that, I was on it years ago.
Oh, you were, okay.
Yeah, but like I say, if you've been attending the meetings, I don't.
No, I, cause we've only, they only had one, and I missed that one.
There's only been one. And this one is.
That leveled the plane.
But I, I had a conflict with that one, that one meeting, uh, the scheduling.
So perhaps I should tell you that there's one scheduled for like January eleventh?
And I'm, and I have responded, and I, I have that on my calendar right now to go to it, um.
So.
So.
You go ahead, you stay on it, I'll.
Okay.
You stay as, you, okay, you wanna be an alternate, do we even need an alternate in that? Maintain the alternate?
Um, I think we are supposed to have it.
Yeah.
Well, it says there's one identified, so we'll just mix those around, okay? Uh, World's Best Workforce, um, that one meets twice a year, we had our fall meeting, um, and we are going to meet now this spring, so the fall was the reflection of what we did last year, and then the spring is gonna be to set the goals, um, for the future. Um, that had been, uh, Bruce and Cheryl, and Bruce, Cheryl and Maggie. Um, so Megan, I see you're interested in that one, um, Bruce not interested, Cheryl not interested, so is there somebody else that would be willing to hop on with Maggie and Megan?
I'd do it, I just, I just wanted to make sure Megan got in what she wanted.
Okay.
Cause I've been on a lot of meetings before. I think part of our thing is to make sure everybody gets involved in different things.
Yep. Yes. Sounds good.
And Cheryl, if you wanna stay on that one, I can.
No, I'm good.
Are you sure?
I'm, I'm good, yeah, I mix it up a little bit and everybody gets some, a taste of everything.
Sure.
There are some others I would rather be on.
Okay, um, so as you move, as we move into negotiations, um, as the chair, uh, Thomas would be represented at each of the negotiations meetings. Um, this year, they only, um, or for the remaining portion of this year, the only contract that is left to negotiate is transportation. Um, I do see that that typically is on a regular, um, on even years, but right now, it's sitting on a, I think we just completed a three-year contract, so I don't know if there was something odd with that, but, um, so taking a look at each one, uh, teachers, um, again, that's gonna be every other year. Um, negotiating, uh, Thomas and in the past has been, um, Bruce and, uh, Cheryl, so, um, I see.
We're not gonna be meeting this year, so I'm okay with staying on it.
This is a pretty simple one to start right now.
I think, do we, on, on the negotiations, is there, we have, for the most part, it's fine with remaining on the, the negotiation committees that we are currently on for this?
For this year.
This year, because we're not really meeting, nothing really gonna change, and then, when we go to first meeting in January next year.
Nothing's gonna change.
Nothing's really gonna change.
Next year, let's agree that.
We'll, yeah, we'll be about, it's gonna be all new, all new, uh, meeting concept.
Okay. That sounds great. Good call. Alright, meet and confer, um, two to four times a year, depending on need, uh, we have not met yet this year, so, um, um, Maggie has been on that in the past, and, um, Cheryl, were you an alternate?
No.
Or was it just a check?
We, we had two on the meet and confer for many years, I don't know why it switched back to one.
And I don't think we met.
No.
Like, within the past probably year and a half, I feel like.
Two years, yeah, three years maybe.
Sure. Yep.
Cause COVID year I lost altogether, so I'd write it off like three years since we met.
Sure, right. So, um, I've, and, and I think there's some benefit to continuity there too, if there's, um, if, that's just my personal opinion on that, but. Uh, staff development, uh, so the staff development, the meeting frequency used to be monthly. Um, what the staff development committee, uh, learned and realized and kind of reflected upon is that, that, um, the membership was dwindling, and they were having a hard time getting staff representation, so we shifted that, that concept a little bit to meeting about four times a year, hoping to, um, elicit a little bit more participation from the staff, because there's a little, fewer meetings, so hoping to get a little bit more, uh, staff participation, so that actually will be four times, uh, per year.
Um, I've been on that one and it's, it's very interesting, and since it's changing, I'd like to stay on it, but I would like to suggest that since we're changing everything so much and we're, it, it's getting much more involved, that we put two board members on.
Okay.
What are their thoughts?
You know, you've gone to the meetings, that certainly, yeah, I was on that, let's see, I have a check mark for that, and I don't remember ever going to any of those meetings, but, um, uh, but yeah, I, if, Cheryl, I'll take your advice on that, if it's something that you feel that would be beneficial.
I, I think it would, because there, there's a lot more to it now and it's changing.
So, like.
Stay more deep.
Um, up, like in regards to, just, uh, maybe, I, cause I'm curious as to how it's different than it used to be, cause I'm.
Adding more people, getting more participation, um, getting more voices, um, we've had some actual discussion about why things aren't working, and it's, it's, it's really informational.
Okay.
For the board members, and I, I don't know, I just, it would be nice to spread it around a little bit.
Sure.
And actually, I'd, I'd be interested in it as well, but, you know.
Well, Megan needs to get in on some of these things, but, but the, but the staff development, um,
I've got her name down here, coming up.
Give her a little more information about the system, cause eventually she's gonna be on negotiating of some sort. I don't know, I'm just throwing the door open, because.
Yep, yeah.
I've always tried to get everybody that's new into different things to try and get a feel of it.
Yeah. I would say the other committee that she's expressed interest in that would help do that would be, um, the Climate Committee as well. That's a little bit more student focused, but I think we'll have some, you know, that would be another systems kind of process, but either way, I mean, if, if that will work for you, Megan, I think that would be just fine to have you hop on that one too.
Yeah, either one, if you have a preference.
On to.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, either one if you have a preference of one versus the other, if you, you know, again, if the climate one was the one that you feel would be more, um, otherwise I, you know, I can jump on any other ones as well. Or after the meetings this last year, maybe do a few less.
No, I can do that one, that's fine with me.
Okay, yeah, by default, there, there best be less. Um, alright, Policy Committee, so, did I miss the technology? I did. You're such a good guide, thanks. Um, so District Wide Technology, um, the last time we actually did not meet, um, because there was not a, a need for a meeting, and so, um, I, the, um, Jonah and, uh, Colin asked me if it was okay to just, uh, cancel the meeting, and so, it, if there's stuff to discuss, we discuss, if there's not, we don't, so, and those have been occurring, um, they have had virtual access as well, so, um, that is, that one is scheduled for four times per year though. So do we wanna stick with, um, we have one representative typically on that, so, uh, Thomas and, um, Thomas and Megan, you guys can decide.
I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind.
The responsibility of two people on that, and keep in mind, I don't really, I know that at one time, that was one of the committees that was in on getting us into our technology levy. Which seem like it's maybe slightly more important than maybe one person, I'm just throwing it out there.
So I think.
Especially with our technology not be coming up.
You got a technology levy coming up, we have a.
Yeah, so some of the things I think.
Four years, don't turn anything.
Yeah, the, one of the things I think to remember is that some of the, like, the board, the board members' role on these is, is governance, right? And so some of what this does is this does get a little bit more into the weeds of, of functionality, so I, I do wanna be mindful.
Yeah, that's the same. I, in, in, in the meetings I have attended with this, I don't know that there'd be a need for a, a second board member, um, to attend, um, but they are relatively convenient because of tech meeting, it's, I've done most of them virtual, even when they've been in person, just, it's ease of my schedule, so I mean, it's not a hard thing for a secondary, second board member to jump on virtually and, and, and do that, but, uh, but yeah, it's, see, just, and the information that's shared through that meeting, it's, it's, like Janelle said, it's pretty weedsy, it's talking about numbers of Chromebooks that they're gonna order and this and that, that type of information right now, it's, um.
That's, that's where I come to the, the levy, where are we using that levy money?
Well, so, one of the things.
Levy money, I don't think coming out of general fund, is it?
Yep, one of the things to remember is, so, um, we now have, so Jonah will be doing, um, director updates to the board, um, every other month, or every other, every other meeting, um, at the work session. So that'll be a really good opportunity to have more of the nuts and bolts in preparation of the information for that tech levy, so that we really have, kind of get all that information back out on the forefront of what that, what that fund provides for us and how we're using the, that funding mechanism. So I think there is gonna be a platform and a tool and an opportunity to get that information, so that we have it firsthand for the board.
I still go back to the same thing, um, is, we're dealing with a tech levy, which is very important for us. If you're dealing with the purchase of the item, very important, we can have the reports, the tech reports, but the public is going to ask people like us about what these things are about, and having more than one board member probably is not the worst thing.
I see, it's simple, it's simple, it's simple enough for somebody else to join, join in on it, but, eh, eh, this meeting typically surrounds a little more just of the, the, yeah, the inner workings of what's happening technology-wise within the, the, the district, um, with purchases of equipment, purchases of, uh, you know, future purchases of equipment, et cetera. I don't know that that changes anything with what the public sees on, on.
But do they have to authorize a levy to pay for that stuff?
But I think, I, I guess my point, my point there, Bruce, is that we'll have the opportunity for, uh, for Jonah, our Director of Technology, to be talking about, here's what's happening, here's what we're doing, he can share out what the, and then be supported by, and if we have two board members, again, I, I don't think that's a problem.
Yeah, it, it's not a big deal to have a second board member on there.
I just think there's other opportunities. And, and it can be.
I'm just throwing it out there, it just seemed to me that, um, for the dollars going into that and how it's handled, and what we're doing with it, we're, we're talking about some serious money. I don't think the oversight of a couple of board members is any different than one, not that I'm interested in being on there, I'm just throwing it out. Megan, you're interested, a, a great place to start, but.
It's simple enough to have somebody else listen in on the meeting, it's, it's definitely not, uh, wouldn't be an issue at all. And, and again, it's, it's right before school day starts, those four times a year, and then, um, but it, you do it remotely, so if it's something you're interested in, we wanna do that, we can do that as well, but.
I'm fine with whatever.
So is that a yes or?
That's a yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, Policy Committee, so the Policy Committee, um, Matt did a nice job setting up the board to have a really solid review. Um, we're, we have two, we're gonna have two meetings relatively close, kinda getting back on, because we've had, um, a little leg time after the referendum, after all the, I mean, we've had a lot of, we've had a lot, we've had a busy fall, uh, so we're gonna get those last, those next two scheduled, but the cycle is pretty, um, pretty consistent, and, um, and the work that goes into that policy is, we do a lot of review to make sure that it, we're in alignment, uh, we stay pretty true to, um, what either legal counsel or, um, MSBA recommends, uh, for the board to discuss and, um, and review, so that, there's been a lot of, of good foundational work into that committee, so, um, that's been.
I think we did a couple of years when we started this, when we first kind of, we, we sat down that committee two consecutive years, just for that same level of consistency. So, and I know you two have been on now three years.
Right.
Um, but the, if, just you can read, roll through all of the policies across those two years.
For some reason, my checkmark didn't come in here, but I did check it.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, send the years in, Cheryl, you're there, but. Good, all three of you, fine.
I'm willing to stay here.
I'm good, right.
I'm good.
And fix it up next year when we start fresh.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, the Climate Committee, so that really has kind of, that took a little bit of a hiatus last year, um, we've had two, uh, Climate Committee meetings uh, thus far, I, I think we probably will end up meeting a little bit more than four times a year. Excuse me, just because of some of the work that's happening, uh, specifically, uh, we are going to be kind of reviewing how to support some of the work from, uh, the survey that went out, and then also trying to understand, um, how to, um, really gain information from kids about what their experience is in our school, and then how do we, how do we, um, respond to that information in a proactive way? So I, I think there's going to be a little bit more meetings than just the four, so be mindful of that as you, as you kind of look at that. Um, we have tried, that will have, um, a number of community members as, as well, um, and there are, are a number of staff, so. Um, again, this is more student focused, but I, I do think that we have to be aware that, um, our students experience what, kind of, how our, our buildings are functioning, so some of there, there will be some kind of crossover of just the inner workings of the district as well. So, um, we had Maggie, uh, Rick, and Cheryl, you had been on that in the past.
My checkmark didn't come through on that one either.
So then, so you had expressed interest in that, um, and were you three on that in 2019?
Yes.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, if, if there's a.
I'm willing to step off, I think you've been meeting on Wednesdays, that's hard for me anyways, so.
Okay.
If Megan would like to get on that one, that'd be fine with me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Wellness, um, twice per year, uh, Rick, that's been you primarily, um, uh, would you be, I, we have not met yet this year.
I was saying, we haven't met?
Not. Not yet.
So I'm fine, yeah, that'd be good.
Alright, and then Facilities, um, that one will gear up again here, um, we've got our next one scheduled, um, we had Maggie, Thomas, and.
I was on it, and my checkmark again didn't come through, I don't know what happened, was for a computer.
I thought, yeah. Okay, well, it could have been, we had, we could have missed it when we merged documents too, I don't know how there was, but, um, so that's, that's another, I guess, one where there's, if there's some continuity, um, some of the, these that are gonna meet a little bit more, this one does not have a meeting frequency only because, um, it really is kind of dependent on what's happening and where things are at. Um, there will be, there will have to be some discussion after the, um, the shift and, and some, some of the funding sources to talk about how we tackle these next needs that we're on, kind of in the facilities plan, so there's gonna have to be some, um, some meetings coming up for that. Um, some meetings coming up for that. So, um, I don't know if if you wanna discuss, I I know Megan, you had expressed some interest there.
I'm okay with doing that one.
Okay.
Couple of, a couple of new meetings you're gonna run into, I think, go.
Yep.
Fill your calendar.
That's what I was thinking, that's why I'm like, we're good with going off that one.
Anybody else have interest in joining that didn't previously check, otherwise we'll maintain.
A bunch of these, I was on them and I think it's important for.
Yep.
That's a one to be important for continuity.
Yeah.
All right, so that would be the discussion of the committees.
That would be the plan. So we're looking for a motion to, uh, um, accept the, our committee assignments as we've just discussed.
Thank you.
I have a motion from Cheryl, and I will second that, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say no, carried. School, right, uh, schedule, uh, regular school board meetings.
Okay, so on, um, on the document, you'll see every second and fourth Tuesday, um, at some point, uh, so the, the second meeting is. Is historically the work session, so there's no business, no action, um, purely informational, um, and then that fourth meeting is the. Um, is the action and business meeting where there's motions and and formal, um, formal work of the board. Um, oftentimes, the work that happens at that Wednesday or at that previous one will lead into. The work that has to happen at the business meeting. So you'll notice there is a precinct caucus on those days, the board has to conclude their work by six P M, so you'll notice those start by fi- at five. Um, and then there's a township election day for, uh, some townships on May eighth. Um, you'll also notice, I I was gonna ask for a little bit of history, what we did is we, we polled everything from. Last year to this year, um, is the purpose of the May meeting in the middle of the day similar to the December to come?
Exactly, twice a year we got to meet with the kids.
Yes, yes, twice a year. Good, so there we go, we'll.
For students.
We'll stay, stay status quo with that, okay, uh, and then.
Can I just make a comment about that?
Yeah.
We used to have the whole student council coming, we meet down there, last couple of times now because of COVID, I guess, or whatever, we've only had like three people come in. I did find the last meeting to be, I mean, it was great, we made the connection.
Was informational.
But in the past, we've gotten a lot more out of kids when we had fewer groups there.
And we had kids that didn't normally come to these meetings, they weren't as outspoken.
Yeah.
Okay.
We were able to.
So I.
Interview kids that weren't normally at these things.
Yeah.
It was, there was a lot more discussion.
Yes.
They, seriously, they were the most exciting meetings that we had. When we met with the kids two times a year, I always looked forward to it, but they seem to be reserved. At the moment, and they didn't used to be reserved, I mean, we could ask them a question and. We were getting answers all over the place, that's what we wanna hear, we wanted to hear from the people that, and nothing against with the, the key people were there also. But there were lots of other students there.
Um, was that, and is, had we always had student representatives reporting as well, or was that? Cause I wonder if when student reps came, how have student reps always been on the board?
We didn't have student, student reps then.
So I wonder if that's maybe been part of the shift, is you have, we have a consistent voice, I, and I hear what you're saying is.
Yeah, it was a little different, it was kind of back and forth. I mean, we were, we had an issue with the food, I mean, they weren't eating some of the food or a fair amount of it, and we asked the kids and they told us what they thought.
They were honest.
It was great, I mean, you're hearing it from the students and I, there was a series of things that happened, but. I don't know exactly what it was, um, maybe, um, it was more of a list of topics, not a formal presentation of any sort. And then it just opened up the door and the board felt that we could kind of talk back and forth. The seminar room was far better than this room.
For that meeting.
Oh, absolutely.
So, uh, was the list generated by the board or the students?
The students.
Yeah.
It was basically the stu- whole student council could come, so there'd be like ten or twelve kids from each group. And they'd go down the row and they'd all say something, but it usually, but when you had ten kids, it sparked.
Sure.
Other things that went on.
Sure, we were able to ask questions and that started a conversation, and I think that was the most fun.
That was, it, seriously, it was fun for me because we saw these young students come in, say what they thought. But they saw the board react. It wasn't like you went to a deadhead meeting where nothing ever happens, they saw things start to take place. There's a courtyard out here, that was pressed by those students out of that meeting.
Sure.
And, um, when we asked them, just, cause sometimes they come in and these things were coming up that they didn't even have down. They're fun, it was really fun, but we kind of just gave them an open door to tell us what they wanted to tell us, and it was fun.
I might visit with you two a little bit to kind of get your feedback on how, how you're getting and eliciting information from students and what, what do you hear and how do you. So that, cause I I want your time here to be meaningful and purposeful as well, so that we, it's, so let's, let's kind of talk a little bit, and obviously we have. Long time, it's May tenth.
Yeah, and I, and I think we're getting, from you two, we're getting what we need.
Yeah.
And that's what we, that's what we got from the student council elected, basically, what we're already getting. We didn't get that wide sweep of.
Yeah.
Kids coming up with different stuff.
Okay, but I got the feeling at that meeting with all of those students there, that they were getting what they needed too. It's like they each had a voice, even if they weren't a jock or a. You know, a straight A student or, you know, there were, there were, it was a real mixture. And I, and they all spoke, I don't think there was one there that didn't say something.
Yeah, and somehow they had it set up, so they kind of didn't feel alone. They were kind of like semi-groups of three, that kind of stuff, and they still gave us a presentation. But it just opened up the questions, I'll tell you what, as far as a board member. There was a lot of information that came from those kids, and we had a lot of food stuff that went on, that took place after that, we got that fixed. We got this courtyard that had been sitting here for fifty years or whatever.
It took us years, it took us two years, but.
Yep.
They asked it for it and we finally got it, sure.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Um, and then you'll notice that July, there is just one meeting, um, as has been in the past. August, there is a primary election day, um, then the rest of the schedule is pretty, pretty consistent with one meeting again in December. Um, just as a, as an aside, kind of keep in your, keep in your mind that that evening is likely when our truth and taxation. Meeting will be scheduled to be, um, so just kind of keep that, and obviously, we will make that determination, um, as a board.
Does the November eighth, um, meeting allow for the canvassing of the results, or are we gonna make sure we put that on? I feel like we always get to that point in time every year and we say, oh, we gotta add this meeting, cause we have to, well, we know what's gonna come up in November, we're gonna have an election. And there's gonna be four of us, the four seats that are gonna be filled, so.
See, the problem is the election day falls on the eighth.
Okay.
So you can't have it before, so it's gonna have to be.
Oh, there's elections.
We always have them.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt that day, I would have taken it.
Yeah, yeah, and and as I said, they.
It's a short, quick meeting.
Should we just start getting that applied to this calendar moving forward, knowing that we're always gonna meet?
Sure.
And have that meeting.
Elections are on the eighth?
Yep.
Can we meet that night?
I don't know if they'd have it in Canvas by then, would they?
No, I don't mean that, I mean, period, can we?
Yeah, that's why I was like.
We don't know about that.
You'd have to be done by six o'clock.
The six o'clock, um, so again, are we at that point in time better off?
Couldn't we just move that meeting a week up?
Move, move the eighth to the first and then.
So we're move it to the fifteenth and then canvas the same night.
Oh.
All right.
But do our informational and, cause the canvassing's gotta be an open, we've gotta have an action.
That has to be an action item.
So, so it's a, you know, do we do the first, November first, that, you know, we. One way or another, gonna go back to back meetings or gonna do something?
You could do the first and the fifteenth, cause the twenty second is Thanksgiving week, so it might be a little tough anyway, so, I don't know.
If we do the fifteenth.
Do the first and the fifteenth and those be our two, two meetings?
And we've done that in the past with a ten minute meeting before.
The canvas, you can write, canvas the results versus having to come in and.
The action item.
Yeah, if we do, do November first for our, our first meeting of the month and then November fifteenth for. Our regular business meeting, which will include the canvassing of the results, and then that'll just be it for.
And then not, they don't have the twenty second.
For November, and then.
Can you say that again, so the fifteenth will be everything? And we'll just meet the one time, cause we're, you're gonna meet back to back on Tuesday, cause we have, you all have a meeting on.
The twenty fifth.
The twenty fifth.
And then we'll follow up with the meeting the, the next Tuesday. Which would be our.
Information meeting.
General informational meeting.
Okay.
For November.
And then.
Then our business meeting on the fifteenth.
Gotcha.
Which would include canvassing of the results.
Sure.
And that gets our two meetings in November, we still get our opportunity to have discussions and we still get the business meeting without having to have.
Okay.
An extra meeting.
Copy that.
So one of the things we always discussed at this one was the six o'clock on Tuesday nights. We weren't here at one time when we all started, but is that still working out for everybody? You know, so for some of us, we can work with our schedules, but.
It's not always the ideal, I think, uh, just, as so many athletic events, um, from all ages. Happen those Tuesdays and those Thursdays and, um, but it's not, it's not impossible, we've, I've been doing it for the last three years and.
We debated this for a long time, a lot, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, Wednesday nights don't work to the, cause of Thursday nights and then.
We, we, we debated Monday night and Tuesday night.
Yeah.
That's what I was just gonna say, was there a reason for Monday night?
Monday night was wrong for some of the board members.
Yeah.
Right.
And then we talked about time and if we got the time too early, but I think it's worth discussing.
Yeah.
I mean, we have to have people on this board and someday, some of us are going off and we have to have people that are interested again. And some of that will be their time schedule.
Yep.
And some, and I, I have seen and and heard some of my colleagues whose, whose, um, boards meet at different times throughout the summer as well. To allow for more evening activities for their kids as well, so that's just another, I mean, I, I have no preference.
I like the continuity of the time because then I can remember it.
Yeah.
Well, and we talked about the continuity being for people.
Yep.
Um, sometimes we will have stuff that's gonna be sensitive and people kind of wanna know when we're here.
Okay.
So, um, but if everybody's kind of okay with it, anyway, at eight o'clock.
If we go, if we go back to the conversation, is is Mondays out of the question for anybody, is that, is that big, bring a bigger challenge than Tuesdays?
I have posse meetings on Mondays.
Okay, yep.
With the Stearns County Sheriff's Department.
Yep. So.
I'm kind of open, I can schedule around just about anything, so.
And the other day of the week, I'm open.
Yeah.
Wednesdays are probably bad for me in rec.
Yeah. Yeah. So, we can just keep Tuesdays, there's no, no, nothing wrong with Tuesdays, it's just, that's just always that, that, you know, big athletic night.
Yeah, you'll miss a lot if your kids are in sports on Tuesdays.
Correct.
Does a different time work for you guys, better?
Well, we talked about that too, one time we talked about five o'clock.
Yeah.
Then we talked about five thirty, at the meetings, we centered on six, but it doesn't, it's kind of, you guys are have the. You guys that are a little younger have the.
I, my, my.
You've got more things going on.
Yeah, my job is more flexible, I mean, I, five o'clock works just as well for, at six o'clock, um, in my case, um.
Most meetings are scheduled for approximately two hours, which would allow if you had. Kids at events.
Yeah, yeah, if we switch to five o'clock, then we'd be done by.
And again, that's not.
About seven or above, you know, I.
Care what you wish for, nothing here.
I know, I know, but that's what I'm just saying is most athletic events start at seven and.
Yep.
So. Just throwing that out there.
We were thinking about the community at one point too, because then the community can't get here for.
That's true.
Public comment, but how many public comments have we had in the last?
One.
One, yeah, yeah. We had two in the, we had two last twelve months, uh.
Two, we got two at two. Two in the last twelve.
Three in the last twenty-four?
We had two.
Right, so.
So, that's, that's.
I'm not guess, something we have to worry about.
Well, we always talked that, once it got to be about five o'clock, we were pretty close. And the thing is, what would we do if somebody was adamant, they wanted to be at the meeting and we were starting our meetings at five o'clock? Does it mean we make a quick rearrangement of our agenda before we adopt it? I mean, we're not so cold that we're not gonna.
Correct, if somebody couldn't be here to five thirty, we would rearrange our agenda to.
Would, and I think that's probably what we would do anyway.
Yeah.
So, you know, that five o'clock beyond, but a lot of everybody, we just gotta kind of figure what works with schedules. Because we need people interested in.
Yep.
These positions, some of us have gray hair.
You can see mine if I grew it out, but.
It's bleach.
For school staff, why be easier for them?
Five would be easier, I think.
Easier five?
Is everybody okay with five, with giving a run at five o'clock this year and see how that works?
I'm good with anything, given more.
Oh.
Whatever you guys decide.
Yeah, is it, my biggest issue is five is just, my wife usually get home till five, five thirty, so I got my kids usually with me till. That point in time, but we'll.
Good civic lesson here.
But we also have a couple of meetings that will be different, we would still have them, starting at five, which then becomes more of a. I think are the three of them for sure that we're up against?
This time, there's three.
And now, instead of worrying about, starting at five, we're worrying about just making sure we're out by three, by six.
By six.
Instead of.
I think there's some merit to that, but.
I don't wanna throw a wrench in that, but sometimes when we have those five o'clock meetings. That they're, especially if it's a work session, sometimes there's some inter- there's some important stuff to get through and we seem to just rush through so much, so I don't know about. Sometimes I'm a little wary about trying to squeeze everything into an hour, and if there is something coming up. Is there a way that we can say at that night, you know?
If we, as long as we have three days notice, we can adjust that.
Yeah.
Yeah, schedule, let's just give the public three days notice, so if we know we have some important things to discuss.
Right.
At that next meeting, we don't wanna try to shove that into one hour, we can schedule a four o'clock meeting and make sure we have enough time.
That's the only thing I'd bring up.
It just, we'd have to have three day notice.
Yeah.
And that's, it, it's a good observation, yeah.
So can I make a motion to move the, the meeting time to five o'clock on Tuesday nights?
Certainly.
Sure. A second.
Well, so what we'll do is, uh, um, all meetings, so, the motion from Bruce. To adopt the, um, the meeting schedule as we have presented with meetings starting at five P M. Um, and located here in the Painesville Secondary School Boardroom.
Yep.
And then a second from Megan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, carried.
Hold on just a second, um, Miranda, that one's gotta go up above, that's the, um, fee schedule. Will you just copy paste? Okay, all right.
All right.
She's got it.
Good.
Okay.
Uh, establish compensation for board members, um, this fee schedule, I'll, I'll just kind of take out that.
Okay, so I, my understanding is this is what it was, and so you've got your monthly board meetings, organizational committee meetings. Full day board, half day board, um, chair stipend, clerk, treasurer stipend, and then mileage reimbursement, um. Per the rate established by the board, um, I would maybe suggest you just, I, is there, has the board discussed doing just the, the IRS mileage rate?
This is, I don't know why I never have anywhere, but that makes more sense.
Because that then is just governed by wh- whenever the federal rate changes.
Yeah, cause it'll move around.
It, sometimes it's to your benefit, sometimes it's not, but it's.
It is what it is.
Okay, so, um, establish via the, the, um, IRS rate, okay?
As far as the rest, I don't think any need to move this.
I don't see any need to, I think also, I think adjustments.
I think most of us were all aboard when we changed it a few years ago.
And it wasn't, that was changed before we came on, but yeah, there'd be no, but.
We were kind of in the dark ages there for a little while, and then we made some adjustments and.
I think we're probably pretty equitable, I'll make a motion to approve the.
A motion, a motion from Rick.
I'll second.
Second from Cheryl.
Do we need to change that, the mileage thing first, or do we need to put that in our motion?
Uh, well, so, uh, Rick's motion is to approve the activity schedule, uh, uh, excuse me, the compensation for board members as currently presented. Which includes per rate established by IRS.
Okay.
She, she made that change down there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's okay, um.
I already fucked it on mine, sorry.
Not a problem, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say no, carried. Eight, school, district, legal counsel and authorization, authorize compact.
Okay, so essentially, what this is doing is this is just acknowledging that at times, um, the superintendent will reach out to legal counsel, um, and it just. Authorizes that I'm able to do so, um, and that we do not, um, have a, a legal counsel and retainer. Some larger districts do, um, but that's not, we, we have not, um, set aside a set of funds as a retainer fee. Um, but we, um, so it, it just allows to use the appropriate legal counsel for the designated items.
I'll make a motion that we, um, where is that, what am I supposed to say?
Uh, approve the resolution as.
Approve the resolution.
As has presented.
Yep.
The motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Rick, um, any further discussion? None, whenever Miranda's ready, we'll do a roll call. None, whenever Miranda's ready, we'll do a roll call.
Jake.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Maggie.
Aye.
Cheryl.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
Megan.
Aye.
That is carried. And then review COVID nineteen emergency temporary standard policy.
All right, so you'll notice this was added as an action item, um, because of the, as the information has been changing, um. On, I believe it was December twentieth ish, um, the Sixth Circuit um dissolved the state. So that the vaccination mandate is continuing to move forward. Um, it will be heard and and just kind of as a little point of history, what happened is. Um, so many of the circuits filed um a lawsuit and so then what happened is all the federal circuits put it together at in one. And that was the Sixth Circuit. We're a member of the Eighth Circuit Court, so if you wonder, like, that's just a little bit different. But now, because that that court has dissolved and said it's moving forward, it's taking effect. Um, it, the the next step is the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court is going to hear the case on January seventh. Um, but what's, what's um, what's happening is that everything that was published in the original order is taking effect. The O um OSHA's standards, they have given some revised dates. Um, January tenth is the first date where our unvaccinated staff members um are required to mask. And um February ninth is the uh first day that we are required to uh seek a negative COVID test. For a an employee to be on site. Uh, so one of the requirements that is part of that, um, the OSHA standards is that the board adopt a policy. Um, there have been kind of two different veins of policy around this. One is whether or not you allow staff members to um be masked and and submit a negative COVID test. Or if you require them to be vaccinated to maintain their employment. Um, what I've presented to you today uh for your review is obviously um a. A process that allows staff to mask and test versus requiring vaccination.
So where did template come from?
So this is from legal counsel. This one is.
From legal counsel?
This is legal counsels. Yep, yep. So this is, um, I forwarded to you, um, I've forwarded to you a couple of different um newsletters. From um, uh, one of, one of the law firms that I've used in years past from the special education context. Um, and some, I've had a pretty established relationship with them. They have um passed along a couple of different updates. And they drafted this a policy for a number of um school districts.
So legal counsel says that, so um we would stick with this um as a temporary solution till.
So if.
Supreme Court decides where this is all at.
Correct.
If everything stays, we're already set.
Yes.
And then we make it permanent, do we have another vote to make it permanent at that point?
I would say, um, one of the things, cause this does identify that it is a temporary standard. If the standard becomes permanent, um, the board would, I would, I would presume adopt a different policy or evaluate the policy again.
So at this point, we're, we're kind of stuck just waiting for all this.
Yes.
Little stuff to take place.
So this, all, all of the dates that you'll see in here are currently in effect, cause that, the mandate as it, as it passed. Um, as it passed this fall would have been uh December, I want to, I believe it was December fifth and January fourth. Where the December fifth was the masking date, January fourth was the testing date. When the injunction came forward, they said, okay, this is an overreach. We need to look at this a little bit further. Um, then it, they said, okay, just be prepared. Don't, you don't have to do anything. You don't have to implement the policy. You don't have to implement the standards. Um, and that stay has been removed. So all those dates just were pushed forward. And Minnesota, and OSHA, OSHA has said that they are not going to enforce any of the dates until January tenth and February ninth. Um, the, unfortunately, it's, it's, um, there's a, there's a significant fee and a fine that is applied to school districts if, or employers. Not just, I mean, it's.
So they have to, cause they have no staff to enforce it in the first place.
Yeah.
So, but legal counsel says this is what we should do and how we should set ourselves up for this temporary period. Then if that's true, then I make a motion that um we approve the COVID nineteen emergency temporary standard policy two oh eight.
Oh, it's actually a policy four ninety-one. I'm sorry. It was four ninety-one. It's, sorry, it's.
Okay, four ninety-one. I think that's what I said, maybe, huh?
I had it.
Has has reviewed?
Yes.
A motion from Bruce.
I'll second.
A second from Maggie. Is there any further discussion?
Can we just real quickly, I do want to walk through, cause there are a couple of highlighted areas in there that I did, I had mentioned to you that I would just give you. Some guidance on that were for us to decide. Typically, this is, you know, if you would have gone with a traditional, um. This is where your policy committee would have said, let's just remove all of these pieces, right? So I just want to real quickly make sure that um you see what those areas are and then I'll delete them so that it it's, it's in um compliance.
So.
Mm-hmm.
So what did legal counsel actually recommend then?
This, everything is.
As it stands.
So if you look at where.
We go in and we decide we're going to remove something?
But just, just.
But just watch for a second.
Just give her a minute, that.
Okay.
There there'd be some.
So if you look at.
Governance that we couldn't make to this that would not.
If we felt strongly as a board that there was a specific group of employees, like if we had, if we had a grounds crew that only worked outside in the summer. We could maybe say this doesn't apply to them. That's not our current staff. So this would say, are there any specific groups within your school district that this does not apply to? Everyone in our school district has functionality that they're interacting with kids and and other adults. So, so that's why I didn't, I wanted to, you to see this as this is where the district has to make the decision, cause the district adopts the policy, right? There's, that's why I'm showing this to you and it's.
It's all over lawsuits. So what does legal counsel recommend?
So as we're walking through this, that's what I'm telling you. So there, I'm going to suggest that and recommend that based on what the legal, the conversation I've had with legal counsel. All of our employees.
Correct.
This applies to.
Yep.
There are no exemptions.
I don't see any sense to take anything out if the legal counsel is not sitting here.
Okay. So then, um, and part of what you'll notice, and this is the way legal counsel writes policy, is they tell you, like, here's the footnote. Here's what you should be aware of and here's why you should think about these components, okay? Um, so they're recommending that um the school district allow for a recovery time. If people, if the staff decide they are going to get vaccinated and they have symptoms, um, they are recommending. And that's where you're going to see this footnote of um the OSHA guidelines F A Q. That's the reference to where they're getting it from. That you would allow up to two days if a staff member, um, is, if they exhibit symptoms from a, a vaccination. Um, so I would recommend that we, we leave this um as the two days.
Yep.
Um, cause I think that that's a, um, I need to undo that, um, cause I think that's, I I, I would support doing that.
Janelle, I have one quick question.
Okay.
And, um, I have not read through this word for word. I've skimmed it.
Okay.
Is there anywhere in here that states that the staff members can take off their mask if they're in the room by themselves with the?
Yep.
Okay.
We'll get to that.
Sorry.
Yep, that's okay. So the next one is really about if a staff member, um, so if, if people are taking time off, they do need to use their accrued paid time off. Um, if they don't have any, um, they ca, they may be granted two days of paid sick leave, um, if necessary to recover. And again, then the, the note was above as to why they were recommending the two days. Okay? Um, the next section, um, is, um, oh, that's the sick leave. Sorry, I got ahead of myself. So it's just if, again, if they have, um, they're not going to have to take a pay dock day. Okay? So reporting vaccination status, um, so this is where, um, this, the district is required then to find out what the status of vaccination is. Um, I am developing a, and and you will see that via the policy, it essentially directs me to figure out how I'm going to gather that information from staff. Um, and um, and that it has to be stored in a uh, an employee's per, uh, medical file, not their personnel file. Those are maintained separately. Um, and so I will be reaching out to staff members to determine who's where, who's been vaccinated, who hasn't. And then, um, require their proof of vaccination. So you'll notice that this is outlining, um, how to do that and so on.
And this doesn't uh have boosters in there, right?
It does not have booster. It is purely the two doses.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know why they're not, like, I know, like, for our institution?
Boosters not currently, not currently required.
It's not required.
Okay.
Uh, it just the fully, fully vaccines means you have the, your, your original two vaccinations, boosters currently additional.
Or OSHA's. Right. Okay.
I would expect no different than a flu shot, uh, boosters for the annual.
Right.
Yeah, you, you, you have a problem.
Right, it'll be the.
They weren't vaccinated. They had to go in and get their two. Then they have to wait like five months before they get their two.
Right, yes. Well, I'm saying like within that time period, like, again, I mean, like where we are, we have to have our boosters or have a certain time period too. They're adding that additionally on.
So I'm just curious what's.
So I wonder if that might become part of the, if it becomes a, a permanent standard, that might become part of the, mm-hmm, but.
Then you'll probably have, okay. How does this bypass HIPAA laws?
So, um, when it is a, my understanding is that because it is now the requirement to, um, to have individuals vaccinated. You, you, they don't have to, they can choose not to provide that information then, cause we're giving them an alternative. So.
Be very similar to notion, you know, if you have to, we have certain vaccinations to enter kindergarten, enter college or to enter this or that, you have to show proof of those vaccinations. This would be a very similar concept to that, once it becomes a required.
And if they don't want to, they wear face coverings and.
Yep.
Get tested.
Yep.
Okay. Um, so the face coverings, the reason that they have this one highlighted is because some school districts. Um, already had adopted a face covering policy because they were requiring students and staff to be masking. So that's why they just had, added the caveat of, um, if you, if you look at this similar policy in a different district, you might notice different verbiage there. Only because of that pre-established masking mandate, okay? Um, so, um, we also, um, I, we've got, um. We have some disposable masks that we've had throughout the building, um, but I would still recommend that the board adopt a policy where it's not. We don't provide them, we'll have them accessible, but it's, if a staff member needs to mask, they're going to mask at their own cost. Okay? Um, the next section is talking about testing, um, and you'll notice that essentially in here, what it does is it, it directs the superintendent. To um gather the um, the process and the timeline for individuals who are not vaccinated. To submit a test within seven days. So we'll be setting a schedule, um, for when a person has to get tested. And then submit their test back to, um, uh, the negative test back to the district office, um, and then, um. It'll be on a consistent schedule and so that it's predictable for staff and underst, um, kind of trackable. Um, cost of that, um, districts are not required to pay for the cost of testing. Uh, we are looking at, um, there's a number of, there are a number of tests that are available. One of the things that you'll notice is that, um, in, in order for us to accept a test, it would need to be done in this, through either a lab. Or, um, under staff supervision. Obviously, that's kind of a, kind of a given. Um, but we're, we're trying to think about ways that would, it would make sense to have testing available for staff. Um, to be completely frank and honest, until I see how many of our staff, because I've, uh, staff have not been required to tell me where they're at. From a vaccination or a testing perspective, um, I, I, I need a little bit more solid numbers so I know how, how much time this is going to take. Or it would take for our, our staff to administer tests.
I'll make a big.
The one question I have, Janelle, is are we changing these dates?
So as, as it is written, um, they did send me an updated policy, uh, today, actually, that has the date changed. I didn't, the only thing that changes is the dates.
Okay, yeah, that's what I figured, I just.
Oh, one of the things that, that it does add in the disclaimer is that it's on those dates or when the mandate is enforceable. So up to this point, the mandate has not been enforceable, so the dates are moved.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I mean, we certainly could adjust the dates, um, but just from, from a transparency perspective, this is what I sent out to you. I wanted you to have a chance to review it without bringing anything different to, um, to the table. Okay?
So does anybody know what it costs to get a COVID test?
All of the board.
Well, you can buy kits.
Thirty, twenty-nine ninety-nine.
The kits that you have yourself?
The blue.
Yeah, and I, I've seen those, but what does it cost to go to a clinic?
A staff, uh, uh.
Or go to the.
Employees can reach out to the vault system and get them for free.
Mm-hmm.
They can be, um, I can't, the school can't order those anymore. They're like a hundred bucks a pop. They're pretty expensive. But an employee can reach out to the, I actually, I think anybody can reach out to the Department of Health and order at-home COVID tests. Um, and then they're just submitted through the vault system, which is what we all, many of us used in years past, um.
It's what Senator Hearn uses for all their.
I wonder, because Suzie and I went in to get tested and it's two months ago and we've not seen a bell.
Yeah.
I don't think it, I don't think it's charged.
I don't know.
With insurance, it's, it's, it's insure, with insurance, I believe it's free.
It's free.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so there is a, um, there is information about uh returning to work. You will also notice one of the areas that's in here, um, is this does have the old CDC standards, okay? Now, the reason that that has not been updated is because the Minnesota Department of Health has not yet adopted those standards. Um, and they're reviewing them, I believe, on January fourteenth, nineteenth. Does that sound about right? Um, so for us as a school district, I think this is one of those areas where we are going to, we may want to review this if the CDC standards. If M D H does adopt the CDC standards, to be completely frank and honest, they've gotten a lot of pushback about the revisions to the timelines. I'm not certain that they'll stay as they are, um, but that was another area that the, that the law firm did say. This, these are, these are the old CDC standards. That's what our current plan was written on, you know, or.
That's where the Minnesota Department of Health is today.
Today.
Can't do it.
This is where they are.
Could we change it so that it's like the current isolation guidelines and it's linked to as an update? So we wouldn't have to, let's say it changes like five times in a year, not that it would, but would it be possible that we could just say current with?
So it does.
Guidelines and then we don't have to list it out and change it?
It does say right there. It meets the return to work criteria in CDC's isolation guidance and that does have those listed. Um, I think part of the, the bigger thing for us is, um, the Minnesota Department of Health has more guidance. We've not adopted, we've, we've, as a district, we've been looking more toward the Minnesota Department of Health as the guidance versus the CDC.
Sure.
Well, it appears the federal government is trying to step away from this a little bit because the states are different.
Mm-hmm.
So there's a lot of information out there where they're talking about trying to step away and put it back in the states. Who are controlling smaller groups of people.
Yeah. So I mean, a, as a board, if you feel strongly that you would like me to update that, I can, I have it in my email. I can grab it and paste that in if you'd like me to.
I'd go with what the lawyer said.
Yeah.
I just like if it changes, yeah.
I agree with Shannon, it's like, there are changes every other month, then you're sitting there.
That would say you're always going with what the guideline is and you don't have to list it out, but.
We'll see how much it changes then.
Right, right.
Yep.
We can come back to this at any time and change it.
We can, yep. Um, so the status of, so it does identify that if a, an individual has a positive. Um, a, a positive COVID test and that's lab confirmed, um, or under a doctor's statement. Um, they are exempt from testing for ninety days, uh, so that can be used if an individual is, um, if they are not vaccinated. Um, that can, that can kind of get them into a ninety-day window, okay? Um, and then, um, the, for new hires, um, this will be communicated with all new hires. Um, and then a new hire would be, um, would be responsible for, um, providing a negative COVID test. Or their vaccination status prior to hire, or prior to their first day. Um, exemptions, one of the things that, um, we had a conversation about was if, um, if a staff member wants to. Wants to request a reasonable accommodation, um, that will need to be, um, sent to, um, me in the district office. Um, and initiated at, by them. Um, the, he recommended that those are handled on a case-by-case basis. Um, there's different levels of interpretation as to what those exemptions can be and what those should be. Um, I, I frankly will, I'll look at them as they come in and try to understand what the, the level of hesitation is. Um, I know that we've had, um, some, some medical systems that said nothing, some have allowed accommodations, some have allowed. So I, I, I frankly, it's just, I, this, it's, it's just a mess that we sit at and we look at like this.
Let's see.
So.
We just need the lawyers on our side and do as they can, because it all has to do with the lawsuit.
Yeah, and, uh.
Where is the unions at on this thing? You have any feel for that, cuz I'm guessing they have a reaction out.
Yeah, you know.
Immediately somewhere.
Well, I had a conversation, I think it's, I think it depends on what part of those states, um, I think it depends on what part of the state that you're in. Um, how they feel. I think, um, some of our, some of our larger, um. Teachers, uh, unions in Minneapolis-St. Paul have advocated pretty strongly for vaccination testing. Um, and I think out in a little bit more rural, um, you don't have the same level of advocacy. Because I think their members feel differently, so it, um, I think it's, it's, it's tricky, to be honest.
Okay.
So is this, most of this seems to fall on you.
A lot of the.
So how, how are you gonna do this on top of?
Give her authorization.
Do you know, maybe like, this is.
She gave her authorization to call, so that's pretty much how she handles it.
I'm like, wow, this is a lot put on your plate, oh.
So, um, the survey, uh, in, and I, here. We have staff that have been watching this, I mean, staff, staff are aware, they know, I, I'm not gonna lie, this is creating a lot of anxiety in staff. And I, I do, I honor that, and I recognize that this is not, um, it's, it's, it's not lovely. We're gonna start with, um, gathering the information, um, we're gonna start with looking at, um. The biggest thing is the survey, um, the deadline after, and I have it ready to go for tomorrow morning. Um, so if the board, as the board approves this, then I'll start gathering the information, give the timeline to Friday. And then on Monday, um, people will have to, they'll have to wear masks or drop off their vaccination status. Gives us about another month before we have to do any form of testing, and then I can figure out exactly how many people. So I've got people, I mean, our school nurse has been really involved, and she's been really good about, you know, here are the things to think about for testing, here are some ways that. Um, if, if we have a, if this continues on, um, I, I likely will be seeking some support. From a, um, an additional, um, whether it's a, a nurse assistant or to help facilitate the testing process if we have that. Established, cuz that's, that is, it's, it's a significant, it's a significant weight on that, on that office.
Mm-hmm.
So. Um, so those are the pieces I just wanted to highlight for you, were the areas that were yellow, so that you could see why there was discussion. And what the board should take into consideration. Now I'm done.
Alright, uh.
Motion on the floor.
Yeah, motion from Bruce and, uh, uh, second from, uh, uh, Megan, uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say no, carry. Returnment.
Uh, we adjourn.
A motion from Jake.
I'll second.
Second from Cheryl, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say no, carry. Thank you very much.